All right. Good evening, and calling to order the December 2nd, 2025, meeting of the West Hartford Board of Education. It's great to have some audience here on this dreary night, and I hope everybody was safe and stayed dry today. Can we get started, Amani, with a roll call?
Ms. Merriman?
Here.
Ms. Yagala?
Excused.
Mr. Gagnon?
Present.
Ms. Hurst?
Ms. Julia?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Kayla Ja.
Excused.
Bridgette B.
Excused. Okay. Great. So, we did have initially a recommenda—oh, sorry, excuse me. Since we are absent, our student representatives tonight have asked Jason to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. So, we did initially on the agenda have a motion to change the order of the agenda items, but because of the weather, we are unfortunately not going to be joined by our Sedgwick Sounds performance with Mrs. Jenna Day from Sedgwick Middle School. Very sorry to hear about that. Is that going to be rescheduled or probably—
I'm looking to reschedule.
Okay, great. So hopefully, we can look forward to the rescheduling of that. I know that you also had a statement to share, Mr. Visinus, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. So, to our listening public at home, as you may or may not be aware, Hall High School today was in a prolonged state of a heightened security posture called "Secure the Classroom." So in this posture, just to say what that means, students are asked to remain in the classroom, but normal instructional activities may continue, however, visitors are not allowed into the school. Hall was brought into the "Secure the Classroom" in order to investigate the possibility of a weapon being on the premises. And with the expert assistance of our West Hartford Police Department and the collaboration of our own security team and professional staff, it was determined that there was no weapon on the premises—I'll repeat that—no weapon on the premises. But there was a prolonged security stance as we collaborated with the police department to conduct an investigation. During that, an initial message was sent out to the Hall community to alert families of a police presence and to assure them of student safety. And a follow-on message was sent immediately upon lifting the "Secure the Classroom" once that message was cleared for public dissemination. The Hall team itself is commended for their response to this incident. Kudos to our student population who remained calm and patient throughout. A genuine thanks to our teaching staff for their professionalism and to our West Hartford Police Department partners for helping to clear the school and to ensure student safety. And a real thanks and statement of gratitude and understanding to parents who I recognize during a prolonged period of time and absent really any volume of communication that as a parent they can find satisfactory. I recognize how they feel and appreciate their patience as we work diligently to ensure things were exactly where we hoped and needed them to be, with all of our students safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I echo the gratitude to the West Hartford Public Police Department for their quick response, and it's challenging these days with how rapidly and quickly information and communication can move, and sometimes it makes things more complex, and so I'm glad we were able to get the clear information. Moving on to public communications, this is a time for the Board of Education to hear from you, our community members, your thoughts, questions, concerns, and suggestions. When you come to the podium, please share your name and town of residence. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak, and please be mindful of Amani, who will be holding up a yellow card when there is one minute remaining in your time and a red card when your time has concluded. We ask for you to then please conclude your comments in a timely fashion and respectfully take your seat. Please be aware that we are actively listening during this time. However, it is a policy that we do not respond to comments as they are being made. We will begin with comments regarding agenda items for tonight's meeting. And just as a reminder, the agenda items for tonight are: adoption of the annual board meeting schedule for 2026, 2026, 2027; college credit-bearing programs; approval of the financial report period ending October 31st, 2025; and approval of minutes from the November 18th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. There is nobody who signed up for any agenda items, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any of those agenda items? Okay. Moving on to general comments, we have a couple of individuals who have signed up, first being Schreiber.
My name is Holger Schreiber, resident of West Hartford. Most of you were here three months ago when my wife and I reached out to discuss inappropriate behavior by administrators in the context of the suicide of our son, Lukas Schreiber, in August 2024. This was after we shared numerous emails and attachments with you with a request to investigate, establish accountability, and make changes so that this will never happen again. Three months have gone by, and nothing has happened. I'm here today to remind you again that your obligation under Section 2120 of your board policies is to supervise and evaluate the superintendent. You were elected to lead this school district, and if administrators do not act—or even worse, take actions that put students at risk—it is your job to hold the superintendent responsible. Such investigations need to be performed with sufficient objectivity and independence and can't be managed by the same individual who complains to our against. You were given plenty of notice and opportunities to ask us specific questions about the information we provided and discuss how accountability will be established and things are going to be changed. However, you don't seem to be interested in such discussions, which is very disappointing. As a reminder, we have serious concerns about how students with severe depressions are treated in West Hartford and how disciplinary measures are identified, putting students' well-being at risk like that of our son. We share with your specific concerns about misrepresentation of facts in educational records, selective investigation of bullying allegations by following up on some but ignoring others, disrespecting medically diagnosed severe depression disorder and belittling it as emotional issues in the context of disciplinary investigation about several others. Those types of behaviors don't occur in isolation. They happen because certain administrators in West Hartford work under the assumption that there is no accountability and no consequences for their behavior. It saddens us to notice that our elected officials care so little, but we hope that you can reconsider, especially with some new board members being here today. And just to be clear, we won't stay quiet, as we are doing this to prevent similar tragedies from happening again in West Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brendan Callahan.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, Brendan Callahan, West Hartford resident. So, I was here about a year ago to share about our nine-year-old daughter, Charlotte. She's a fourth grader at Duffy. When I was here, I described her big curly hair, as well as her multiple disabilities. I expressed a concern that extended school year offerings for students like Charlotte have been shrinking over time—from eight weeks to six weeks to five weeks, and most recently to four weeks. And I asked for some creative problem solving to support vulnerable students like Charlotte who need routine and continuity to thrive. So, I wanted to be sure to return this fall to express my family's genuine gratitude to this board. Last summer, the district partnered with the Justice Education Center to bring Inspire Ability Summer Camp to Charter Oak School. We are grateful to Melissa Caballero and Kelly Braus for their leadership on this front and thankful to this board for your support. The camp was a welcoming and enriching community for Charlotte, who was not able to access most summer camps. At this camp, Charlotte had exposure to arts and crafts. She had a chance to learn how to strum the cello. She even got to play sports with some visitors from UConn. She made friends, and she kept learning and growing. In fact, last summer, Charlotte was finally able to toilet train, something she achieved with coordinated support from her team at Duffy, the summer camp team, and our family throughout the summer months. This sort of growth is truly life-changing for Charlotte, and we could not be more grateful. So, as we look ahead to next summer, I'm hopeful that the district will continue this partnership. Our most vulnerable students need this support, so thank you very much.
Thank you. There is no one else signed up for comment at this time. However, is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, moving along to non-staff communications and reports, we would typically hear from our student representatives at this time, but they have been excused for the evening given the weather situation out there. So, we know that Kayla and Bridget are here in spirit. Unfinished business, we have none. So, moving on to new business, we have next the adoption of the annual board meeting schedule for 2026, 2027. Can I—I'm seeking a motion that the Board of Education review and revise as appropriate the proposed annual board meeting schedule and adopt a final meeting calendar for the 2026, 2027 school year.
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miriam. Any discussion, Paul?
Yeah, so I'll just orient you to that schedule. It is located in Page 2 of your board booklet, and as you may or may not realize, it's necessary for boards of education to pass a regular meeting schedule, at least a year in advance, and a calendar year. So, we typically take care of this business in December. So, what is proposed pretty much follows the pattern that we've established here in the district of the first and third Tuesdays of each month, with the exceptions being noted in red. And where there may be any perceived gap in meetings, typically that's for the observance of any religious holidays. We are not infallible, so if there is something that you have observed that does not work for you as a board, I would ask you to let me know, and we can either decide that tonight or we could bring it back for an additional reading based on the preferences of the board.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, conflicts? Jennifer?
Hello, everyone. Sorry that I was late. You know, no particular conflict, and I don't think this is the moment to discuss this, but, you know, it seems to me like we meet a lot, and I want to just put that out there, I guess, again, for a discussion another time. I am new to the board and I'm learning, but I've attended previous board meetings as a guest, and it seems to me like we could find some efficiencies in both the material given to us of like, you know, us having discussions and being able to talk about issues, and then also work off of the scheduled board meetings and committees and things like that. So, I just want to put it out there. I'm new, and I'm not looking to change anything like today, but just from what I've seen so far, it seems like this is something we should be thinking about.
Thank you for bringing that up. It will—I think it's something we can follow up on. Any other concerns or questions about the date specifically? So, do we feel good about moving to a vote to officially adopt it? Okay, great. So, can we move to all in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion passes. All right, we are now moving on to staff communications and reports, and we will start out with the superintendent's report.
Excellent, thank you so much. So, December has clearly ushered in some winter weather, but it also is the time where we have a wealth of happenings at our school, especially as it relates to our winter concerts, musical performances, and so many, so many great things. So, very excited to enter into the December months. The first cheer that I have actually kind of hits on that December theme of holidays. So, the governor and Mrs. Lamont, they annually host a holiday open house at the governor's mansion. We're very proud to announce that this year there will be handcrafted decorations adorning the governor's tree created by our very own Charter Oak Elementary students, with some support from Conard students who are partners. On the subject, I'm sure our students would have mentioned this, but I wanted to give a kudos to our Hall and Conard football teams who participate in an event each year to honor educators that have made a positive difference in their lives. It's a program called "Our Jersey, Your Impact," whereby players provide—one of the teachers or educators or people in the school who made a difference for them, one of their jerseys, and I put some pictures in so that you could see kind of what that looks like. I also want to share that the district has earned recognition as part of the Bonnie B. Carney Awards Program, which is a program sponsored by CAAB, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, for excellence in educational communications. It's our budget document that was submitted, and it earned an honorable mention, which is a tie for second place, for exceptional clarity and transparency. And just a huge shout-out to Barb Ruah and her entire team for the amazing work that goes into putting that together every year. I did share with you and kind of reshared for our new board members just some general information in your board packet about the SEED grant. SEED, S-E-E-D, is short for Special Education Expansion Development Grants, a new grant from the state of Connecticut this year, for which West Hartford, as well as other towns, have all received funding. The funding is coming basically equivalent to an entitlement in the same way that our Title I, Title II grants are. So, it's to say that everybody gets something, and the something that you get as a district is based on student population and demographic factors. But to receive the grant, there's still an award process, somewhat to where you have to submit proposals. And while we've received the amount of our allocation, and I believe we've actually—the funding is actually there in the system, in the electronic grant system—we're not yet able to access those grants until the state puts up and publishes a grant proposal. So, they'll review how we plan to spend it. We'll share that. That information will also come out, I'm certain, through financial examiners, but I just wanted to raise the awareness of that as something to be on the lookout for. Couple of announcements under curriculum and professional development. I did want to share that Charter Oak International Academy, which, as you likely know, is a magnet school, which has an international baccalaureate theme to it, is undergoing a program visit, what essentially I would call an accreditation visit. I was pleased to have Shannon be able to attend, but the accreditation team, the visiting team, is there all week. They're engaged with classroom visits, student focus groups, parent focus groups, teacher conversations, and we're very excited to get their feedback and to really showcase everything that—exceptional that happens over there. Once that final report is available, I'll be certain to share it with the board. Likewise, Conard High School is in its final preparations for the NIASC Decennial Visit. NIASC stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's an accreditation visit for our high schools. They will be having those meetings in earnest, beginning on Monday of next week, and they're very, very excited to showcase the incredible number of strengths that Conard has. A district curriculum leadership team, as well as staff from our career in technical education, attended the first annual Connecticut High School Public Safety Pathway Summit in late November. And not only did they attend, I need to credit both Ann McKernan, but also Chief Priest of our fire department for their work together and their collaboration to really—they—I think conversations that they were having kind of spawned the event and created a statewide focus. And so, this event was a gathering of fire and public safety officials, as well as educators from across the state, to talk about what pathways exist and to educate school districts about how to start a program that supports career and technical advancement in the public safety sector. And lastly, I believe I wanted to highlight an announcement that's here from our sister organization, the West Hartford PLTI. It was most recently selected as one of only five Parent Leadership Institute programs in the state of Connecticut to receive a state grant to fund their mission, and it's due certainly to the large success that West Hartford PLTI has had, ongoing now for 14 years. So, they run classes weekly from January until June, and I know that they have communication going out through our school newsletters if there are community members interested in joining. Those really are a summary of my updates, open to any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Ethan?
Just one question on the Special Education and Expansion Development SEED Grant. The way it reads—and it could be just me—it's new money, but it seems like it's not enough money. So, my question is, is it going to bring more resources? Is it going to bring more cost?
So, it is new money, and I would say, sure, is there such a thing as enough money? I don't know. But it is bringing new money to West Hartford, as well as other districts across the state. And the caveat to that is that they're looking for expansions, and we have expanded. So, one—an example of one of the expansions that we had this year for which we can apply the funds— for which we can apply the funds, we increased the number of intensive academic programs, so programs to support students with autism in our schools and significant academic needs. We expanded programming to Charter Oak as one place. And so we are going to be able to balance costs that we have associated with that with funding from the SEED grant. And there are several other areas that we're looking at to apply those funds based on expansions that we've had within special education funding. But that's essentially kind of what the state's looking for, is how they can provide additional funding to school districts in recognition of the growing need for programs, and also looking for innovation in new programming. So that's also, as the SEED grant continues, a way that we can look to kind of help to fund some efforts that we may take on here in the district.
So conceptually, it should be neutral?
It's to our benefit. It's going to give us additional funding we would not otherwise have. The funds themselves won't, you know, they'll be listed as a separate grant, so they're not coming out of our general fund.
Yeah, and I think just the clarification is that this is different money than the money we typically get to offset the cost of special education, but...
My question was more, it's new money, but does it require additional money to come in? It sounds like it's being absorbed by the money that's already there in the budget. So you have the addition?
Yeah, the existence of this SEED grant was something that was communicated to us in advance as we were looking at budget last year, although we didn't necessarily know a number. We obviously knew that we had a need for expansion in our programming based on enrollments and things of this nature. So this will offset, if that money was not available, planned expenses that we would otherwise need to, based on the expansion of our programs. But it also offers us the opportunity to look at new programming efforts.
Jennifer?
I think we're going to go through the financial report later, but one of the bullets there is People Services shows a $240,000 savings to the Connecticut SEED funding. So I guess just so I'm clear, am I getting the two things confused here, or is that the same?
If I might defer that question until Barb comes up, just so I make sure I don't misspeak.
We can definitely wait. Not a rush.
Wonderful.
I'll put a note that we come back to that. Any other questions for Paul? I just want to make an additional plug for the Parent Leader Teacher, Parent Leader Training Institute, PLTI. I was a participant going on six years ago, and it was one of the most transformative experiences as a parent. You get amazing resources, amazing education. It's completely free. There is childcare. The whole thing is just set up in such a great way. And so I encourage any parent who's even thinking about it to definitely check it out. There are, I'm not sure how the word is spreading, but I have a flyer that I can get to. Paul, if you don't have it, and then we can make sure.
Yeah, we've sent that flyer out through our school.
Okay, perfect. So take advantage of it. There's nothing to lose. So, great. So we now are moving on to staff reports and board discussions, and we will be hearing tonight from Ann McKernan and Mrs. Eileen. Is Eileen unavailable? Okay. So Ann will be joining us to talk about college credit-bearing programs with West Hartford Public Schools.
Ooh, it's like quite the walk-up with the screen coming down.
As Ann gets settled, I'll just introduce her for board members that are new. Ann is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And this report is one of, has become one of the most exciting reports that we love to give each year, based on what really is a streak of continued excellence that started more than 10 years ago now, and continues to exceed our expectations, which is a testament to the work of our teachers and the potential of all of our students. So with that, I'll turn it right over to Ann.
Everybody, it's nice to see you. Welcome to our new board members. Nice to have you with us. Last year, I came to the table, and I said there couldn't possibly be a better report. Someday, there is not going to be. I was definitely wrong, because this report is outstanding in so many ways. And although we'll always look for room for growth, it's hard to imagine. You know, it's really hard to imagine. It's an outstanding report. I'm very proud of our teachers, who work tirelessly with our students, our students who are willing to challenge themselves, and their parents who are willing to support them, and all of the many people who created multiple pathways for students to experience this earning credits in high school in ways that are comfortable for them. So I'll start off by reviewing tonight's agenda. We'll go over the purpose and the benefits of dual credit programs. Dual credit meaning that you are enrolled in high school, you get a high school credit for the class you're taking, and you can get college credits. One, three, or four is usually, the majority are three-credit courses. There's occasionally four-credit courses that are lab courses, and we have a new course that has a one-credit course. We'll talk about the executive summary I put in your packet. We'll look specifically at the Advanced Placement Program, which has been a star in this district for 20 years, probably. And then the other dual-credit programs, which are the UConn ECE, other state and private universities that students enroll with, and the Connecticut State System, which is our community college system. And then we'll open it up for questions and discussions. And please interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. Our goal is to prepare and inspire every child for their future. And quite a bit of this is to give them the rigorous coursework that they need to extend beyond their high school curriculum. And there are many, many benefits for students who take these programs. They are exposed to more rigorous lessons. They earn transferable college credit. They gain some confidence and to succeed at their next level. We have three, the AP program is the college boards program that has been around for many, many years. I don't know how long, actually. It has some other programs around the world that are similar. There's the IB International Baccalaureate Program. There's the Cambridge Program. But these are the leading programs in the world for children to take high school courses and earn college credits. Although the colleges all accept them in different, with different caveats, they are all applicable to different colleges. We have our dual enrollment courses, which are, you're sitting in a high school course, and you're also taking a course with a university, or a college, or a community college. And there's great impact for this. We believe that this year we can calculate close to $3.1 million in tuition savings for our families, which is no small amount in anyone's book. So our AP program, ninth through 12th grade students, 47% of our entire high school population participated in the program just last year, just last year. So that means that a vast majority of the senior class is taking AP classes, as well as the junior class. There are several courses that sophomores take, and then the freshmen. Don't take too many, but they sometimes sign up for one or two. We administered 3,200 exams. So just think for a moment how much thanks we need to give to the people who actually organized that event at both Conard and Hall. 1,272 students participated, which is truly amazing when our schools have about 2,600, 2,700 students. And the percent scoring three or higher, which is considered the passing score, if there is such a thing. As I say, some colleges will only accept a four in some classes, and a three in others. But three is considered to be qualified for college work, and that was 88%. We had 678 students. Now, many of these courses are both AP and ECE at the same time, so it's hard to get a distinct number. But 678 students participating in the UConn ECE program, 98% of those students earned college credit. The UConn program is one of the oldest, I think it is the oldest dual enrollment program in the country, and their credits transfer well beyond UConn. There's a huge list of classes, of courses, I'm sorry, of colleges that will accept UConn credits. We also have students going to other schools, CCSU, and some private colleges, and Connecticut State, which is our state community college system. Just looking at the AP program, as mentioned in the report, rigorous college-level classes, advanced standing for college. It's very widely used. It is comparable to the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, or the Cambridge University Exam System. And there are more than 3,600 universities that will receive AP and AP exams scores. The processes, our students start selecting all their courses, not just AP courses, in February. In the fall, they are engaged in their coursework. There are AP resources available, AP Central and AP Daily. There's a lot more electronic resources available for students now. Every year, the first two weeks of May are the two weeks of exam period for the students. They are scored on a one-through-five scale for their work, with five being highly qualified for college, one being not demonstrating that yet, and a three being the score that generally is considered to be qualified. This is a chart that shows our growth since 2003 in taking AP exams. This year, 47% of our students participated. You see a consistent increase in participation in this program over the years. You see a dip around 2021. Those were the pandemic years, but we have certainly far exceeded that. And I really have to go back and thank people over 20 years ago now, who had a vision and saw it through. And every year, all the leaders in the district, the principals of the school, and the teachers have bought in to say, kids can do this. So can our students achieve at a highest level? Absolutely. Our exams, 3,200 exams, that peak this year, you might say, wow, look at that peak. And it really was a true increase, a dramatic increase this year. That may have been the fact that we, this year, we restructured our AP English courses at Hall, where we had multiple options in the 11th grade in the past. And this year, we limited those options to 12th grade and offered AP language and a oral language class, a world literature class. And more students chose AP language class. So I think that was contributing to the dramatic increase this year. But they did exceedingly well. In your packet, in Appendix A, you're going to see, you will see the scores for every subject. Did you have a question?
Are you good with questions while you present?
Any way you like.
Okay. So obviously, you know, I think it's great. So many kids are availing themselves of this. As a mom, one of the things that pops into my mind, and I think, you know, we all just got an email about this too, is like, kids taking on too much. And, you know, so I guess it's a multi-part question. But one, like, are we also considering that maybe our high schoolers are getting too stressed out and trying to do too much? And when I see growth like this, that's kind of one of the things that pops into my head. And then, I guess, kind of aligned with that, I'm wondering about the focus on AP classes, and does that impact like, school rankings and other things? Or, I guess, I want to know more about that, if you could enlighten me.
So I would certainly take a moment, and then Paul will have some comments, I'm sure. But one of the things that's important for us is we have no goal for students to take multiple, multiple AP classes. Some students do choose to take. I have two children who finished just last year. And one chose, you know, a good number, and one chose even more. Our goal is not to have students take any number of these classes. We would like them to be exposed to at least one college class before they graduate. However, that being said, students have their own, they talk to their friends and what they're taking, and that's certainly something that we need to help them with their decisions. Our counselors, I think, are very good at asking them, what is the right level for you? Right? For instance, one of my children didn't want to take the high-level maths. So did take APs in most of the humanities, did not choose the maths and science. The other one chose both. Because, and her counselor was very helpful with having her understand, this is not going to ruin your college experience if you don't take AP Calculus BC in high school. So we have to message well. We have to tell, ask students what they want, what they're capable of, what they don't want to do. We suggest they take electives, all kinds of electives as well. So it's a balance, because you are in a high school, high-performing high school on many levels, and students certainly have their own peer pressure. They also may be thinking ahead and thinking they need to do this. Our counselors have to be very adept at working with them. And they do meet with them individually every year when they choose their classes. So it's a really important part of the process, to choose what's right for you. And there are some students who do not experience a college class before they graduate, and that's fine, too. But we would, we also don't strive for high, high scores. We strive for just about the average, 3.1 is the average score. There's no sense in trying to get much higher scores, because the way to do that is to limit participation. We don't want to do that. So it is, everything that you're bringing up is valid, and we have to be careful in our messaging.
So I had a question, just following up on that, in terms of the student capabilities and expectations. Are AP, is there any kind of stratification within these three college options? Or are AP classes considered to be a higher level than the others?
Well, it's, I would say that the, there's no real stratification, certainly for us. We would like you to have the experience of taking a college class, any one of these types of classes. A lot of the AP and UConn classes actually run concurrently. So it's hard to stratify, because their majority run together. Then there's a handful of UConn classes that are ECE that are not AP classes. And, you know, it's hard to really answer that, because each department at UConn, for instance, is actually in charge of the, and the parameters. They, so it's not like the university sets parameters for the course. If it's a chemistry course, it's from the chemistry department. If it's an English class, it's from the English department. So it's hard to say, is an AP class harder than a UConn class, for instance?
Yeah, I think really where I was going is just asking whether AP classes are in some ways a proxy for honors, for honors program.
So a lot of our AP classes are, you know, are the equivalent of the honors class. We don't, there are some schools, math was an area where I was math supervisor for years and years. And at one point years ago, there was a question, hey, can we have a calculus class that's honors, but not AP? And the answer was, well, you can, but it's a very different class. That would be an applied calculus class, like for business applications, where you can teach a very different course, a very different curriculum. That's not AP. That doesn't, that wasn't what, but in terms of like, what's, if we, when we go out and look at school districts and say, well, what's your honors calculus look like? And then you look at, well, what does the College Board Calc AB curriculum look like? They're the same. So there's no, AP is not harder for the sake of being harder. AP has done a lot of work over the last 30 years, really, which is part of the reason why our enrollment has grown so much, number of students and number of exams, because they've also expanded their offerings. They look out, and they have really tried to gauge interest. And now, one of the things College Board is actually doing is it's also trying to get into the credentialing business to where, hey, we can find these career and technical sorts of skills and provide an industry-recognized certificate. That's, again, not the AP or honors that we might have thought of. When I went to school, AP was this holy grail that was only for some kids. And we've made a deliberate effort in the district to demonstrate the potential of all kids to take at least one course to stretch themselves into, whether it's AP, UConn, ECE, Capital Prep. And you can see, we've doubled the number of students over a 20-year period. We've tripled the number of exams, and we have 88% of students earning the three or above. So the success is there, that where you see a lot of the limiting factors, they're false limits. And we work very hard so that it's not a, College Board is doing the same. College Board President will come out and say, hey, there may be too many, you know, there's a number out there that might be too many exams for a student. But to Ann's point, that number is different for each child. I also have two sons that went through public schools, one of whom struggled and wanted to take more APs, another one who wanted to take fewer, kicked himself afterward because he was in a, he was in a course, and he said, I know I could have done the same work in the AP course. And he kind of breezed through, and he got an A+ in a class. And there was nothing wrong with that. But it's sort of, sometimes the students don't know. We do, we do rely on our counselors to help provide that guidance so that, so that no student either limits themselves or overextends themselves.
Any other, Miriam?
I just wanted to, if you don't mind, just finish the question I asked originally, which I appreciate all the effort that's put into these AP classes. But I would like to, I guess, my concern is clearly this seems to be a priority of the district, seems to me. And, you know, I think everywhere, high schoolers are facing more pressure, and mental health is a huge issue. So I, I think that this is great. I just want to be conscientious of kind of the pitfalls of it. So my, my questions are, one, you mentioned the counselors. I'd love, we don't have to do it now, but I'd love to know more about, like, are the counselors directed to do that? Is this something that you just happen to do? Okay. And then, and you can respond verbally so everyone can hear. But then, secondly, does having more kids in AP classes, does that impact rankings? Or is that taken into account?
So the first, the first question, are the counselors directed to talk about this? It, it is well-known in our schools, a lot of the students take AP classes. And what's the right challenge for you, challenge by choice? What's the right challenge for you? And so the counselors have this conversation all the time. It's an ongoing conversation because you don't want students to take too many, and you want them to not feel like they didn't challenge themselves. So it's a, it's a sweet spot that you try to, and I would say, absolutely. They, they think about it, and they talk about it amongst themselves. I don't even think we have to direct them anymore, to be honest with you, because we've had such a strong-going culture, not only AP, just a strong college-going culture. So it's, it's very much in the system. And then your second question was about rankings. And do you mean student rankings or?
Or like, I mean.
School rankings?
I guess, I'm not really sure what I mean, to be honest with you. But it seems like there's such a focus on this. I'm just wondering, like, what are the other pressures that are causing it?
Students don't have work in, in our schools.
Well, no, not the stu, it's just the school district, I guess.
The school, there, there's the Connecticut Accountability Index, which has 14 measures, I think, on it. It is, it is one of maybe 14 measures, and it has a, it has an impact. So does art and your PE score.
Yeah, it's one of many.
So it is not by any means like, wow, we're chasing this number because it's going to help us. We really have a very strong culture, and that perpetuates itself. Within that, you just need to work closely with the children to say, is this enough? Is this too much? And assure them that they're on their path for the right next step in their life. And I think our counselors are excellent at doing that, and I've experienced it myself. But I, I, I believe strongly in what I see as a professional and what I've experienced personally. Miriam?
Thank you so much, Ms. McKernan. It's really exceptional so far. I'm just curious, as we're telling, sharing numbers, are the same types of classes and dual enrollment opportunities available at both high schools? And including the same amount of classes and opportunities?
So if you go to the appendices, which are on page 10, 11, and 12, and 13, I think, you'll see that there are, there are one or two classes that are not, that are not available. But they're usually because there were no signups. It's not that they're not available. They just, they didn't have enough students to run the course. So that's on the AP. For instance, this year at Conard, we didn't have enough students to run the research course. It is available if we have enough students. There are, I think, one or two EC, for the ECE program, your teachers have to be certified by UConn to teach the class. And so sometimes if we have a turnover in a teacher, or bring in a new teacher in, if they don't have the certification in time, we have to work on that. But by and large, I would say well over 90% of the courses are, are offered at both schools in the amount that the students need them. I mean, commensurate with the signups.
Yeah, just emphasize one point that Anne made, which might be new learning for perhaps all board members, I don't know. But at our high schools, what's, what's dramatically different from our middle school and our elementary program is that student enrollment, student interest drives course offerings. There, there have been examples over the years of a niche course that was proposed, perhaps on one side of town, and then offered duly on both sides of town once it obtained a footing, but kind of took off at one school and withered on the vine at another school just based on student interest. Perhaps it could be the following of a particular teacher. But we do, by and large, as Anne mentioned, if something, if something is successful somewhere, we will work to replicate it, but it really becomes the consumers who make the decision as to whether or not that product is, is on the top shelf or, or not.
Ethan?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the question of kids taking too many APs. From my own personal experience, one of my sons, I tried talking him out of taking too many. And after talking with him, I realized I was wrong. He was looking for the challenge, he wanted more. And so for him, it was, he wanted more courses. And it was, he did very well, so it was the right thing for him to do. So I, I had the same concern, but he convinced me I was wrong, and I was.
I appreciate you saying that because you could look at it one way and think, oh, we're adding all this pressure. But when you put in all the safeguards, the guardrails, do we know that the students have their own culture? It's much stronger than the parent culture on them. I couldn't say anything to my daughters, what their children, what their friends were taking was an influence. What, where they, how they perceive things was an influence. So we need guardrails to reassure them that they should challenge themselves at the appropriate level, that, that if it's not appropriate to take any college courses, that's okay. And if it's appropriate for you to take 12, it's okay. And, and I, I've heard from Paul's child was in the situation, I wish I had taken. I hear your child wanted to take several.
He wanted the challenge.
Right, and mine, mine did too. So it's, it's got to be appropriate, and that's the role of really, really strong teachers who act sometimes as mentors to kids. They come back and say, can I take this? Should I take this? To counselors, to all of our administrators and teachers who know that if not watched, it could look like, it could feel like they should take too many, and we don't want that. So I'll go back.
Continue.
Did you have a question?
Nope, I just turned it over.
The, the next slide is the AP Equity and Excellence Score that the College Board reports every year. And this is the percentage of your graduating class. So these are your 12th graders who earned a three or higher on at least one AP exam. And that was our highest ever this year at, sorry, 67.6 for Hall and 65.2 for Conard. So that was a, a very high percentage of our senior class alone are taking these classes. And, and it's probably even higher because there's possibly juniors who took a class back then and, and aren't taking their senior year. So it is, it's a very high score. The growth of the program, I've included both in the report, and here I just took some example years for you to see. The program has been growing steadily, but I think what we're most proud of is that despite an increase in the number of students, the increase in number of exams, our teachers are working with our students so they are successful. We are not looking to get that score, 3.8 to a four or five at all. In fact, our, our stated goal is a 3.1. But we are trying to make sure we open up as many opportunities to students as possible. So 88% of the students who attempted an exam got a three or higher, and the average score was 3.8. And again, on page 10, you'll see the breakdown of each course. We look at that very closely to make sure we have the right resources and the right courses and help the students. They're working really hard, they're trying some very difficult things, so they deserve quite a bit of support. We're very proud of the work we've done with our students of color. Students of colors are well-represented in this program, and they're doing very well. Highest number of exams ever taken, highest percentage at a three or higher, and highest average score in the, I believe we started tracking this data back in 2000 and, oh, I had to go back, 2003, so in 22 years, so highest program ever.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was just curious if you think there's any reason for the increase in the, I mean, what's really objective as a measure is the test score. And curious if there's been new efforts to form different kinds of study groups or different kind of tutoring sessions that you think might explain that really dramatic increase?
I'm going to throw something out first, and I'll certainly let Anne add on. But one of the things I've talked about over the years is more about the cultural shift and the understanding of the opportunity gap. And, and the notion that, what, what spurned all the growth within the AP was not, nothing magic. It was opening the doors to students and letting them know they could try. And, and I was there as a teacher during the time when we first did this under a principal by the name of Chuck Landrosch. And, you know, teachers were concerned, oh, my gosh, students won't be prepared. We're going to have to work so much harder to make them successful. All of those preconceived notions did not manifest. It was, it was really just opening the doors, and the rising tide raised all ships. Getting that same shift, those doors were open, but sort of creating that cultural spurn for all students to see and believe it, really, I think, is one of the biggest factors. And there's work ongoing with that. There's, there's more work to be done within certain subgroups of the subgroup. But the evidence of success is there, the numbers don't lie. And I wouldn't say there's been any, there's no targeted, specific thing for, for students. It's really just good quality instruction, good, strong relationships with students and teachers, and, and a belief, a belief in the students and a belief in themselves.
And just to add to that, we also, and have done this for many years, we invest a lot in our teachers. So the College Board does provide some very good professional training. And we, we have some leaders, national leaders in our district in certain areas. For instance, in AP Computer Science, we have people who serve as, there, there are readers, there are table leaders of readers for the exams, where you get intensive training. And if you're a reader at a test, you're a scorer. If you're a scorer, you really learn and understand what the, what the, what the knowledge and skill base and application base is. And then we have teachers who, who are readers, we have teachers who are table leaders. Table leaders are leaders of readers. So if they disagree, they help to, on a score, they, they help to apply their, their parameters and determine scores. And we have national presenters in our faculty, several actually. And so we do a lot of investment in our teachers. And then we also, in the last few years, the, the electronic resources that are available have just really exploded in AP, AP Classroom, something that wasn't available to kids in the past. They'd have a big thick textbook or something, but now AP Classroom is available all the time. AP Daily with videos that help students have lead teachers around the country who can re-explain concepts at any time in the day. So can, can have a new explanation of a concept during study hall if you couldn't go see your teacher. You can watch at night. So there's, there's a lot of new resources available, which might be contributing. Thank you. Jennifer?
Thanks. I really appreciate the focus on, you know, black and brown students and making sure they have the same opportunities. I'm, I guess I'm interested to learn more about the cultural shift and what that means as far as having more students of color taking the test. I guess I'm also interested too, like, it seems like we lay out the student of color test scores over time. I don't see that for white kids. So I'm, I'm interested about that too. So I guess both of those, to, just to learn a little bit more.
We have the all group, which is this slide.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Students of color, Hispanic, black, and two or more races in this group.
Right.
And I hadn't broken it down, there's many, many ways you can disaggregate the data, many ways. I hadn't broken it down for this report. It certainly can be broken down.
Well, it just feels a little bit like we're tracking black and brown students' test scores and not the white ones. I just want to be cognizant of that.
Yes, and I would say that one of the reasons we were paying so much close attention to that was there was underrepresentation for quite a while. So you wanted to make sure you addressed the underrepresentation. Where there is in your report, I don't have it in the slides, you'll see on page seven, that of our Asian students, they, our Asian students in West Hartford are about 11% of students in the high school, and they represent 14% of the test takers. So they're slightly overrepresented. Our students of color are 35% of the enrollment, black, Hispanic, and two or more races, and they represent 23% of the test takers. And our white students are about 54% of the population, they represent 60. So white and Asian are slightly overrepresented, and kids of color are slightly under. Although that's been getting much closer, and that's the effort Paul's talking about. And that was going back to a lot of fine people before me, including our own Giulio Duarte, who's in the audience, who made efforts to tap kids on the shoulder and say, hey, have you started about taking one of these classes? And, and listening to them closely about why they may choose to take one or why they might choose not to take one. And students have their own thoughts about these things. They've interpreted things that they've heard, and, and those conversations help to maybe dispel any misunderstandings. So it can be done, but that was the emphasis for the students of color because of the underrepresentation that is still occurring, but much less than, than it had been.
A follow-up on that, I would still like to learn more about the, the cultural piece. But do we have black and brown teachers and other school leaders talking to students about this? I guess I just, I guess I should wait to hear more about what the cultural shift means and like, what happened.
Well, you know, we have, so your question has a lot of tentacles. But the first I would say is that the effort to have more of our students better represented in these classes comes from the underrepresentation. And then, as I said, when I highlighted Giulio's work, individual discussions with students about the why. Do they perceive the class a certain way? Do they think the class is for a student, student that doesn't include them? Do they need to be with a friend? Is there a certain teacher they'd like to take it with? Because when you undo those barriers, some students even had said, well, if I take it and I don't do well, does that mean I'm not going to do well in college? You know, fear. So the culture shift is, is not just promoting big and saying, oh, why, why aren't the kids of color taking? But going further, having the individual conversation, learning, well, that's a barrier. We might have to make sure two or three of the kids who are just friends are together in the class. Those are the kind of cultural shifts. One-on-one conversations, tapping on the shoulder, figuring out what the barriers, having conversations, reducing fear if you don't do well in this class, which, by the way, you're going to get a lot of support. But if something happens, it does not mean, you know, you're not going to be a college student or do well in college. So that still needs to go on, it still does go on. Every year, our, our department supervisors help with that. They look at students who were in courses before, who, who have the profile of a kid who'd be really strong, and who didn't sign up. Just ask the question, did you not sign up because you really just don't want to, or were you afraid? What, what is it? And so that's a lot of personal conversations. Thank you.
Piggyback one last thought on it. I mean, when you look up at those numbers, those are numbers of students, and you're going from roughly 100 to roughly 200 to roughly 300. It's like anything else, the jump from 100 to 200 is probably a lot of adult work to open doors and offer opportunities. The jump from 200 to 300 is probably a lot of student-to-student discourse. Once I see myself as the average kid, you know, it's not, oh, that's Anne, Anne's super smart. She can do anything, but not me. Once I can see myself through my peer group succeeding, that begets the cultural shift to where more students kind of sign up. So that's, that's some of what I'm talking about.
One final thought on both of these slides. I want you to understand that this took place in a declining enrollment environment. So these numbers are going up, yet Conard and Hall are both down about 300 students, not each, total, over the last 10 years. So you're getting more participation in a smaller population, which is really impressive as well. If I move on to, there is a student recognition program, and the longer explanations are on page seven in your booklet. But we have 654 students who've been recognized for their work, with the scholar being a student who earned three or higher on three AP exams, and distinction being students who have earned three or higher on five exams with a 3.5 average. So we have lots of students who have been recognized. They put this on their college transcripts, they write about it in their college essays. There's also a school recognition program that usually is mentioned in October every year. Conard and Hall both got high distinctions last year. So when I went to add it to the report, I couldn't find it anywhere, and I realized they moved it to January. So we won't know, but I have high hopes that we will do well there too. I'd like to switch over, it's okay, to the dual enrollment programs. And these are our, the UConn ECE being our largest program, the state and private universities having a small but important role here. And then Connecticut State, also a small but important role. So 678 students at UConn with 1,589 enrollments, we offer 28 courses. Those courses are taught by West Hartford faculty who've been certified to teach the class by the UConn department in which the class resides. So it's not a university distinction, it is, the department has to certify the teacher. In our state and private, we had 10 students taking colleges, courses on college campuses. They're taught by university faculty at the university, or hybrid, if that's how the school, you know, everyone. school, you know, everyone's doing so much hybrid or online. So, it could be hybrid, it could be online, and it could be at the university. A lot of the courses there were advanced level courses in something that they may have started, an advanced Spanish course. We've had such talented math students that I can't, I can't honestly sometimes comprehend the math that some of these high school kids are taking. Beyond multi-variable calculus is very hard for me to understand. And I was a decent math student. And then CT State is our Connecticut State Community College. We had 75 enrollments and taken on different campuses, and you can see that, those courses on page 13. So, it's a little bit more about UConn, some things I've mentioned before, so I will try to make this brief. But, this is one of the oldest concurrent enrollment programs in the country. It, the UConn class is equivalent to the same cour, the course we offer is the same course at UConn. UConn certifies the instructors. Oh, it was established in 1955, that's how long it's been around. And the courses can transfer to about 87% of the colleges around. They have a very nice webpage that you can visit and say, oh, my child's going to go to dot-dot-dot college, would they take the UConn credits? This is a little bit of a projection over the last few years. Our participation in this program is, is dramatically increased, especially from last year to this year, and I'll explain that. We estimate it's approximately 400, 4,500 credits that they earned last year. One of the reasons for this is the State Department of Education offered a dual enrollment grant for any schools that wanted to expand their dual enrollment offerings. So, we took advantage of that. We applied and got an $89,000 grant, and we could apply it in any way we wanted. Our choice was to apply it to classes where there may be underrepresentation of kids who have access to, or kids who see themselves as college students. So, we didn't expand our upper-level math classes, we already had a lot of upper-level math classes. We didn't expand our upper-level literature classes, we were very good there. So, we added an art class, we added American Sign Ling, we articulated our American Sign Language class. We added two classes in wellness, health and education in urban communities as a one-credit class, and kinesiology, which the kids have really signed up in droves, I think over 110 kids at each school. Is, you know, personal wellness, being a personal trainer is, is very attractive to kids, so kinesiology. And we had a public speaking class that many students really liked. It was a great way to get an art credit, and so we articulated that with UConn. So, we used our money to create these classes through curriculum writing and to fund these classes through resources. And I think that really contributed to the dramatic increase. This is a, a slide I think that's really important because the per-credit tuition at UConn this year is $709. For a three-credit class, the students pay $150. So, each three-credit class saves almost $2,000 in tuition. And a four-credit class, like a biology class, and you can see the number of credits on page 11 and 12, so biology, AP Calculus, AP Chinese Language, there are four-credit classes? And it's cost $200 to register, but the course is worth $2,600. See a lot of smiling parents when you get to this slide. The total estimate, we believe, I didn't calculate the exact numbers because I would have to go through who took a one, who took a two, who took a three-credit class, but we estimate about approximately $3 million, and it's about $2,000 per class. Going on to our, our, the other, another prong of this, and I'm really proud of this because it's multiple pathways for students. So, although there were only 10 enrollments between CCSU and St. Joe's, it was another way, and maybe that serves these students the best. Approximately 30 credits earned. It's often advanced level classes that, that we have the class, but we don't go that high, like advanced Spanish beyond Spanish literature, beyond AP literature. The courses are taken on campuses, I said, and Connecticut State had 75 enrollments, approximately 25 students earning 225 credits. Their courses are on page 13. This was, yes.
Can you speak to the cost implications for these ones?
Yes.
In particular, I was curious how the CT State courses are tuition-free.
They are tuition-free as well.
How, who, how is that happening?
As our agreement with the state, I don't know if I have a great answer, so I'll have to look it up, the, the technical part. I would say the one course that the children paid for here was the St. Joe's course. That is not a tuition-free, that was a child who took a course, got prior approval from the, the department or from a counseling, and took a course. CCSU, we have an agreement with, where if they have spots, now, this is if they have spots at CCSU, and it meets the child's schedule, so there's a couple, it's a harder, that's why the numbers are lower, too. It needs to meet the child's schedule, and they need to have the openings, because they're teaching the classes. So, that's why some of these numbers aren't as high. So, CCSU is also tuition-free, St. Joe's, the privates are not, and I'd have to get you a better answer on CT State, but it is tuition-free.
Is it part of pact, the, the tuition-free community college?
I think that's-
So, they're just taking a spot that is available-
Yeah, I believe our community-
-in an already existing class.
College system has, if correct, I believe, if I have it correct, has an articulated agreement, not just with West Hartford, but with districts across the state, to be able to provide for this.
So, I, I, yes.
No, go ahead, finish.
No, go, go ahead.
Two quick things on this. One, I really want to commend you, I think that it's-
Not me, believe me, but thank you, but-
I don't want to commend you. I want to commend other people.
Yes, thank you.
On the, the new types of courses that are offered. I think that that's, you know, fantastic, and I think, too, a lot of my questions about the increase in enrollment, I think, is answered through, like, the increase in, in types of classes that are optioned, that are offered. So, you know, kudos to other folks besides you.
Very good.
And I also want to just throw up, you know, another good thing for the college courses. I know I took advantage of that, and it was a huge help, and I think that the cost savings cannot be underrated. It is a huge help, I think, especially in the transition to college. And so, I guess I just want to also offer my, you know, kudos on that as well. I think it's a great thing that we can do for our students. My final thing is more of a question, I don't know if it's going to take us off path, but I'm interested to know more about offerings that aren't for kids on a college path, but are for kids who either want to get involved in manufacturing or the trades, technical high school type situation, and it seems like Paul is ready to fill me in.
Yeah, so, last year, and historically, last year and the last few years, we had combined our early college experience report, AP exams, early college experience, with our career and technical education credentialing offerings. This report, you know, it's become so big, and, and we have been expanding over the last three years, and, and kudos to Anne, you can thank her for really the heavy lifting in supporting that work specific to manufacturing itself, because that's been a career focus area for the town of West Hartford. That we, that we chose to separate those reports just so that, so that each could have its own separate spotlight.
So, we'll be hearing about manufacturing, other trades at another meeting.
And Paul mentioned in his opening remarks, the work we were doing on public safety, I got to this report, I mean, this is already 10 pages, and to your point earlier, like, it's a lot of information, so I tried to stick in this lane for this report, but we can do more.
Well, I, I want to be careful what I'm asking for. I am interested to know what our students have available to them as far as, like, manufacturing two-year programs. I'm not interested in asking you to do more work. So, is that a topic we address at another meeting? Okay, great. Thank you.
Miriam?
Sorry, Miriam.
Thank you. I agree that this is so, so impressive, and the cost savings is really remarkable as well. How, since I don't have high school-aged kids yet-
You will.
I'm curious for parents out there, how would they know about all of these offerings and the cost-saving and all the benefits and the guidance counselor conversations? Is this information put out by the school at the beginning of the year? How, how would parents know?
Shannon's a parent of a freshman, so maybe she should answer that for you.
Thank you.
There was an excellent presentation orientation last winter that families were, I think there were a couple offerings of it, just to offer different dates and time options. And I was completely blown away. First of all, just the, the care and the thoughtfulness of the, the whole team being there at night. All the parents were able to hear kind of universally what the offerings were. There were tables where you could go talk to different departments, and I think just the sheer number of offerings available at the high schools, I had no idea that there would be so many things that were accessible to any student. So, I think the hardest part is figuring out how you're going to choose. But, so I think you get a lot of information as a parent, you then kind of cycle back to it again, you kind of have to hear it a couple times, that you get a course catalog, you can kind of look over everything in more detail, and then everybody is accessible if you want to go in and ask more questions at a department level, at the counseling department, or talking to the administrators at the school. And they give a lot of great guidance, and so, it's, it's exceptional. It's a, it's a great set of offerings.
And just a quick follow-up. And are these sessions and then material available in multiple languages and translators, et cetera, during these presentations?
Well, anytime a translator is needed, we, we are very well aware of that and have all kinds of processes to get translation services. I don't know what's in hard copy available in which languages, but our departments are very well aware of the needs for translation services and how to access translators, or they're working so closely with the families already. Although we could get surprised, we have some really good processes in place for those. And I think as your children get older, you're slowly, you're going to hear a bit more when they're in eighth grade and they're getting ready to move on, and then you'll get to the high school and you'll hear, hear more. The high school is a very different world, right? You get there and there's so much. The middle schools and the elementarys, they all have a lot going on, but the high school gets very, the wide variety of things that are happening, and it gets really broad. So, I, I think you're going to enjoy it.
And all the materials are online, so you could look at it.
As you say, all the course descriptions and the full catalog of courses is available online, and then you can click a button and translate the webpage to hundreds of languages.
Yes. And I wanted to finish with this. This was an email, like, I did change a little bit of the information to not give away gender or give away anybody's name, but this was a letter we got from a parent just this September, talking about their child being accepted to a private college with 39 AP or ECE credits, classifying that child as a sophomore. And when they met, they were going to meet in a few weeks, could the child graduate in three years? But I liked the way the parent also talked about the end, where he says, we're so proud of our child, but the look on that child's face, knowing what they had done in high school to help their family was priceless. And I think that's really important because we talk about affordability, we talk about college costs, we talk about a lot of things, and in this one program, you're addressing affordability, you're addressing college costs, you're, you're supporting families, and, you know, you're really making students proud, you know, it's a way that, that students are really proud of themselves. And this is not the only letter I've ever gotten on this topic, so I thought I'd include it because this isn't just like, maybe 39 is a lot, but it could be 12, and you're, and you're halfway through your freshman year, or it could be 20, and you're almost all the way through your soft, freshman year. So, the, although the credits vary, and this, I know, well, the college just was, is a very fine, private institution that, that took these credits.
I'm going to take privilege to add one, one point on that, and the College Board has done extensive research. You throw away the 39 credits, throw away the 88% of students earning a three or above. College Board has done extensive research on students who earned a one on an exam, so not yet qualified or questionable, qualified. Those students have a dramatically higher success rate in college than students who did not participate. And, and it's, it's all based on that belief set of seeing yourself, stretching yourself. It's where we talk about, as a district, holding high expectations. That doesn't necessarily mean holding everyone to the same standard of you have to have 39 credits or five honors courses. It's, you have to stretch yourself, you have to, you have to, you know, really look at where your interests are and, and try to dive deep into, into an, an area. So, it's a, it's, it's a great compliment to what's up there, I think.
Thank you. Ethan?
I had two things. One was just on page 10, I was interested to see the differences between the two schools. And I don't know if it's the teachers or, but it was interesting, oh, history's heavy to Hall, and economics is heavy to Clonan, and some others. The other thing I was going to say was we've been talking about the affordability, and this was a different son. One of them took US History AP at Hall, teacher, I assume, is retired by now. It was phenomenal. He, without it, although it was not a drug path, he wouldn't have become a lawyer and done various clerkships and other things. So, to me, it was like a real turning point for him. It exposed him to history just because it's an AP course, and I think he just got a lot out of it. So, I assume those kids have those kind of reactions to those courses.
I, I think, I think they absolutely do. And if you remember, previous superintendent, Mr. Moore, Tom Moore, he talked about being the son of plumbers, I think. Seven, seven kids in Boston, they're all plumbers, and, and he goes to U, well, some high school teacher says to him, you should take AP US History or AP World History, I'm sure which history it was, is very much like your son, and that brought him to college, UMass, and then obviously illustrious superintendent of West Hartford Public Schools and on to, and on from there. So, sometimes it is that one teacher, that one course that shows you can do this, whatever it is, manufacturing, history, math at a high level. So, yeah, we're very proud of this. The small differences, sometimes we do look at the differences in why a course is popular. Sometimes it is a teacher. Sometimes it is the culture of the school, everyone's like, take that one, it's great, you know? So, there are slight differences, but you can see a very robust enrollment in almost every course across both schools.
Yeah.
I was going to just end with the key takeaways being, you know, we had our, as I started the report tonight, saying it couldn't have been better, but it was. All students and students of color, highest exam number, highest pass rate, highest average score, dual enrollment. We are the second highest dual enrollment town in the state, and we have 9,000 kids. The number one is, I won't mention the town, but it has 18,000 children. So, and we're not far off. They have 2,000 enrollments, we have 1,600, so we do very well. And we've, we've talked about the, the very important cost savings and number of students. So, that ends my formal part of the report. I know we've had some discussion going on, but happy to invite more.
Jennifer?
One quick follow-up question, and to actually to Miriam's question. Is, is that financial piece on the same information distributed to parents as far as being able to achieve college credits in high school? Okay, great.
They share that widely. I don't know if it's the exact same way I shared it, but they do, yeah. They share that widely because it's really, really good for the kids.
Amani?
Hi, I'm actually so passionate about this because I went to school in New Britain, and I took, I can't speak on AP, but I took the ECE courses. So, I did History 1501, 1502, and Physics, and it literally changed the course of my academic career, made me feel confident in going to college, made me advocate for myself because in college courses, like, there's hundreds of kids in those courses. So, to be in a smaller class and to raise your hands and ask your teacher for resources you need genuinely made me feel like, oh, I can go to college, I can afford college, and getting those courses taken off of your tuition and being able to take more fun elective that you're interested in in college, I vouch for this ECE program, so thank you so much for your presentation.
Well, thank you for your comments because there's no better advocate than someone who has sat in the seat and understood what it meant to them. So, congratulations on your choice, and I'm glad it's all worked out.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
That was fantastic. And I just want to make a comment that, to Jennifer's point earlier about career pathways, that is the work I do every single day in my day job, and there's been a lot of conversation about better aligning dual enrollment course offerings across the state with articulated career paths, so that there's a real understanding of what the work kind of is leading towards, because a lot of the AP courses are incredibly helpful and interesting, but don't necessarily get the industry-recognized credentials and the skills-based focus. So, there is a effort on an advocacy level to invest more in dual enrollment at the state level, because otherwise districts are kind of going it alone to make more of those offerings available. So, we are a part of that fight, and if you want to join it, we welcome that. So, thank you. All right. So, moving on to our fine, our routine matters, where we will be hearing our financial report. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending October 31st, 2025?
So moved.
Thank you. Jason, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. And I think we are joined by Barbara, who's going to be available to answer any questions, and is Jason or Ethan one of you presenting?
Not me anymore.
Oh, no, sorry, John. Want to, did you, you got it, Ethan? All right, thank you.
The funny- The financial, this financial update is for the end of October 2025. And the changes that have been projected since the forecast was made at the end of September 2025, as well as being compared to the full year fiscal year '26 adjusted budget. The fiscal year '26 full year adjusted budget general fund is budgeted to be 214.1 million. The difference between the fiscal year '26 adjusted budget and fiscal year '26 budget is a fiscal year '25 savings of $700,000 that had been moved into, had been put into a non-lapsing account at the end of '25. It was then moved in fiscal year '26 by a vote of the school board earlier in the year to add to the fiscal year '26 fund spending. That means the full year expenditures of 214.1 million from what had been 213.4 million general fund budget. I'll just say, I'm hung up because when we do, in my real life, we do budgets, the budget stays. Here we have an adjusted budget, so I keep trying to draw the distinction. While there were changes in the individual line item since the September forecast review, the overall forecast has not changed in terms of the month of October in total. The salary budgets had an overall year-to-date positive spending change, a reduction of the salary spending of $25,000, which was a positive change of $75,000 since the September forecast. The most significant line item change was in the teacher's salary line item, a negative $425,000 variance from the budget and a negative $325,000 variance from the September forecast. The increase primarily can be attributed to the addition of six elementary school classrooms with teachers above the elementary school teacher's budget because of the addition of kids coming into elementary school. The negative variance in the teacher salaries was offset by savings in maintenance, secretary salaries, and people service to salary line items. The positive $25,000 total salary variance forecast to the budget is offset by a negative $25,000 line item in the purchase service budget. The net being a forecast is flat to the fiscal year '26 budget, above the $700,000 that came in from the non-lapsing funds. As previously, or has been noted, when the budget was passed in March, we assumed it would be necessary to use the money that had been placed in the non-lapsing funds. So even though it's adjusted budget, it was assumed to be that way. In other pages, in terms of the grants, state and federal, district had 4.1 million in grants, federal and state, 3.9 specifically earmarked for the West Hartford schools. In terms of special funds, the third financial set of funds, the 10 different funds ended the fiscal year with a $2.3 million balance. And the final set of funds was the nutrition service funds. Terms of nutrition services, a balance at the end of October was a fund balance of $2.9 million, approximately $700,000 less than the October '24 balance. That's what I got.
Thank you, Ethan. Any discussion or questions? Paul?
So I have the answer, I believe, to Jennifer's question earlier. You were asking about the pupil services showing that $240,000 savings on the salary lines. And so when we passed the budget last year, we knew of the existence of the seed grant, but we didn't yet know the allocation that we would receive. So with the allocation of, I believe it's approximately $317,000 from the seed grant, we will now have a favorable $240,000 expected, favorable variance in special education salaries under the anticipation that that's how we'll be applying a lion's share of that money. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. You know, I think maybe it's how this is written, it says that there's savings due to the seed funding, and it seems like maybe it's just costs are being offset.
Correct. When we first passed the budget, we were, you know, we had to apply those costs to the general fund as if we, you know, wouldn't get the seed grant, not knowing what the dollar value would be. So the offsetting produces what will now be a savings in the general fund.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Miriam?
Can I ask a general question on page 17 and 18? Kind of more specific. I'm just curious about midway through the mandated adult education. What is that specifically? And that's my first question. And the second one is, who vets these grants? So some seem very specific and just curious exactly what the vetting process is. Please, thank you.
Sure. So mandated special education, adult education is, as the phrase would indicate, the state of Connecticut requires school districts to be able to offer adult education. We do have a program. It does fall technically while it's outside our day-to-day K-12 operations, it falls within our Board of Education budget. And we have, we hire, you know, we have an administrator that oversees that, a part-time administrator that oversees that. We hire teachers for that program. The programming exists and is offered within our school buildings generally, but also in some outside community sites. So I don't know if that answered kind of the question of what it is, but in terms of vetting, to make sure I understand the question, what we're required to do for any and all of the grants, and many of the grants are, you know, you'll notice over the years, the majority really of the grants are year-over-year grants that, you know, that we apply into in terms of, we produce here, you know, we'll receive information from the state of Connecticut, here's how much money you might be entitled to receive for what's called an entitlement grant, based on your population metrics and all the rest. But there are, there are specific criteria and contingencies about how the money can be spent, what it can be spent on, and so on and so forth. So we assemble that, we send it to the State Department of Education, they vet our materials and then to ensure that our plan is in compliance with the grant structure. And then at the end of the year, we have to send what's called a grant evaluation report where we essentially justify and talk about the impacts that to the state. And the state reviews that and provides us feedback.
Thank you. I guess I'm also curious about some of these smaller grants that look like maybe they were teacher-applied for, or I don't know, you know, some of the smaller ones under that first section, you know, can teachers apply for grants? Is there a process for them then to share with admin? And then who kind of oversees that?
Sure. Some of the smaller amounts that you're seeing there are actually relating to carry-forward grants. So we have grants that oftentimes span two years. Sometimes they don't, you know, they may not even have an end date. So for instance, some of them that you're looking at below, for instance, the Asia Society Foreign Language Grant, that was a grant that we had received routinely on a regular basis. And the grant funding stopped. And so they were trying to sort of, you know, stretch it out for a little bit longer. So this is the final year that they'll be deploying those funds. But some of our recurring grants, like Title I, Title II, and IDA, they are federal grants that span two years. So they carry forward.
Jennifer?
Follow up on that, I guess, to put my question quite bluntly, like I'm wondering, can the red share grant foundation decide they want to give a grant to West Hartford and have all the chairs red? Like, I guess part of the curiosity is like, who is this Williams Fund grant? What are they granting and why? And like, how do we go about deciding who can grant money to schools?
So I don't know if you can speak to the Williams Fund, but I can speak to the general question of, which I think I'm hearing from both of you. There are, there are at times grants that teachers might apply for more generally. Generally, we, you know, we want to have some sort of awareness and involvement to ensure that any, any funds that a teacher might be seeking are things that are, you know, in terms of what the parameters of that grant are, the things that fit within the parameters of the district. So they would, they would request support from that. And then whether or not, whether or not those funds require, you know, kind of fiduciary oversight by Barb's office or not is something that we then work out. For instance, right now, there's a grant that we were recently told we'd be awarded that was something that was offered through, it was offered through the State Department of Education, I believe through the Open Choice Office. We put in an application for it. They will post on their website requests for proposals. We put in an application. It was coordinated and overseen centrally by one of my team, but we have received word that we should get that. And so now we're kind of working on that. And then once, once that, that funding is secured and everything else, I'm sure it's something that we'll be highlighting to you as a board. A lot of the times, yeah, there's, there's money that teachers can kind of go out and fish for. We really try to encourage them to work within parameters within the district so that we don't fall into any unnecessary traps. But when things become available and we learn about it, if it's something that is a district we have interest in, we would, we would try to support them with our administrative team. Relative to, I don't know, relative to the one that was mentioned.
Oh, that one was just less.
Yeah, I'm less familiar with Williams Family.
No, no need to explain it. I just use it as an example because it's less clear than the Chinese language or the Asian society, that's all.
Sure. And that was actually part of a grant from, that was administered by the Hartford Public Foundation of Giving. And so it had come through that and was a larger grant. But now what's seen there is the carry forward that's left.
John?
Sure. How does the Open Choice Chef Settlement differ from the Open Choice Enrollment and Acceptance Lines? And is the Chef Settlement, is that an annual grant?
So the Open Choice Chef Settlement is a grant that we receive on a recurring basis. And that spoke, that is leveraged to support our Open Choice students. And so there, we're primarily doing math intervention tutoring, some software, iReady software. And then the enrollment grant is focused more on, the acceptance grant is focused more on sort of like family engagement and providing information around the Open Choice program. So they're a little bit niche in the Open Choice program.
Mary?
Question on page 18. What does the educational services reimbursement mean?
Yes. So when we have students who are, say, in the Open Choice program, we, if there are costs above regular education, or if we have a state agency-placed student, we would invoice for a select education components. And so we would deposit the funds there and we use that to offset costs associated with the students.
Jennifer?
I think I just have three more questions. The first is on 15, the education non-lapsing account. From my non-financial brain, this says to me that there's no more money left. Is that what it says? And if so, what's the plan?
So the educational non-lapsing account is a bit of a unique situation. In the springtime, we found ourselves in a unique position where we had additional resources available to West Hartford Public Schools, unanticipated. And so state authority allows for us to deposit any surplus into the educational and non-lapsing account. So in the springtime, we intentionally deposited into these funds, there was an offsetting budget reduction. And then at the November 5th board meeting, the board appropriated those funds into the general fund.
Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The two were okay. I noticed that we had said that there were six more kindergarten classes needed. That seems like an exceptional number of more classes than expected. Can you give me a little bit more color commentary around that?
Sure. They were elementary school classes, and so they were spread out amongst a few different grades. So we had anticipated 196 sections and ultimately needed 202 elementary sections. And so we worked closely to monitor the class size guidelines and where those sections were needed. And as a result, we, we did need the additional teachers to reduce class size.
Yeah, I could say that, just to add some additional detail to that, we saw some, and if you go back, Barb gave an outstanding presentation of our first day of school enrollments just, was it last month, last meeting? Or the previous meeting to when the new board members were installed. We had some, some fairly significant unanticipated growth, all centered in specific grade levels in and around specific neighborhoods, which kind of pushed us over the class size guidelines as Barb mentioned. And six is, you know, it's not unusual for us to add two or three, or collapse one or two. Six was, six was fairly significant for this year. And one of the things that I think was really fortunate in terms of our hiring, and we're always interested in being able to blend new talent with people with experience. But we, we did actually, we were, we were fairly fortunate with a fair, a fair number of new teachers that came in lower on the salary scale so that the overall impact to salaries being six teachers over was not, was at least, I think, offset a little bit by our ability to place younger teachers, which is always good for us to have kind of a blend of people we can shape into our, into our mold and then, and then also be able to retain and find some veteran folks, especially in niche areas.
Yeah, I want to follow up on that and I'll ask my last question, I think. I guess I'm wondering about the impact of that. I hear you financially, but I'm wondering space, all those other things. And then, go ahead, then I'll ask my last question.
Yeah, space-wise, I mean, I would simply say, we, you know, you'll see, we do an enrollment projection report more in the spring every year. You'll get, you'll get to see that. And space-wise, our schools can absorb classes. In fact, if you look historically about the number of classrooms that we had to where we are now, the trade-off is that when we've had a much greater number of, say, typically elementary classrooms, other folks who currently have a dedicated classroom, our world language teacher, some dedicated spaces that might be afforded to tutoring, or larger rooms that might be utilized for smaller settings, like some of our multilingual learner ESOL instruction, you know, we've had the ability to provide people probably with more comfortable space. It's not that the school buildings can't absorb, it just means that more, more individuals might be sort of itinerant in where they're, where they're providing their instruction. So, but you'll, you'll see in our, in our multi-year enrollment projections kind of where we are by building with the number of classrooms available and what it looks like. But we don't, we don't have any, while we don't have any dramatic space needs, you know, we're also not at the point, one of the, one of the areas of interest to the board over the last couple of years has been pre-K expansion. And that's a larger question because you not only need classroom space, you need specific types of classroom space with specific facilities for children, you know, bathrooms adjacent and things of that nature. So there, there are construction dollars that would be involved.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll, we'll be chatting more about that. My last question for tonight is about the nutrition services budget. You know, I obviously am new and I'm learning here. You know, my kids are also in elementary school, so I'm only seeing those menus, but I would say they don't strike me as awfully nutritious. And that's very concerning, especially for kids who rely fully on school lunch. I'm sure there is a cost component to that because there is a cost component to everything. But, you know, I would like to know more about, about that topic, learn more about how we're making those decisions. And, you know, I think the other piece of it too is creative ways to, I don't know, enhance our nutrition services, which I'm guessing I'm not the first person to think about this. I would love to, to hear more and learn a bit more about that.
I mean, I'm, I'm wondering from a financial perspective, it's more kind of a potential future agenda item, is what I'm hearing, maybe proposed?
I'll, I'll wait to propose any new agenda items and chat, learn more about where we're at. But, you know, I think, I'm guessing that the type of food we supply is in direct relation with the cost. And so that's.
Yeah, no, I would, I would just want to, I wanted to address that part of it because I know there are relative. I know there are, relative to the federal funding that we do receive for the nutrition services, there are definitely nutrition guidelines that we're subject to, and in fact, I'm not going to say that school lunches is the same cuisine that's available to us downtown, but, you know, that, that's always the, you know, they do definitely meet the standard, the nutrition standards that are set forward by the, by the federal agency. That said, there are, there are things that are more popular that sometimes are excluded because they don't meet those nutrition guidelines, or there are things that we can't include, but we can, if, if the question is less financial and more about that, that is something I can, I can first get you just general information about and include it in an update, or if you want a full-blown presentation, we can get that, so I'd welcome, you know, any specific questions or comments.
Let me follow up, as far as, as what I want. What I would just, just to add a final comment is that, you know, completely anecdotally, and I, and I don't like when people do this, but here I go, you know, my kids will come home and tell me they had, you know, like, pink milk, and I'm just like, oh my God, we're still serving strawberry milk at lunch, and I was somewhat surprised by that. I think that what kids eat is directly related to how they learn. This is obviously substantive about food, but my guess is, when we have the food discussion, there's going to be, well, we're, you know, there is, there is a budget reality here, so, yes, and I will, I will get a more specific, maybe, discussion of what I, what I think will be helpful together, so I don't do anything yet, but I just don't want to completely silo them, because I think we'll be going in circles.
Any other questions? John?
I just had a question, going, going back to the six new teachers who were hired for, for those vacancies, in, in a given year, when you're hiring to fill, you know, to fill vacancies caused by retirements, departures, is the pool largely lateral hires with some experience, or are you looking, or are you looking more at a brand-new teachers coming out? What does, what does the typical pool look like?
So we'll, you'll see, and you'll get a report typically on, I think, beginning of the year is when Shannon will, will provide kind of what that looks like. The pool, I mean, there is, you know, there's, there's a blend of two things, there's, there's obviously a lot of talk in the world about teacher shortage, and the teacher shortage is a real thing, but at the same time, we do attract a pretty significant number of applicants, so we will get, we will get quite a blend of new, new folks into the district, into the profession, and that's not without effort, that's not without a presence at our, at our colleges and universities in terms of their career fairs and, and conversations and communications that we have with, like, the NEAG School of Education, Central's program, Eastern's program, and others. And then you'll get a number of experienced folks that are also trying to get into the door here in West Hartford, or, so, it's, it's a pretty decent blend, but we do a report on that annually, typically it's, some of those metrics are coming right at the beginning of the year in September as part of the Human Resources Update.
Thank you, I'll towards that.
Any other questions? All right. So regarding the Financial Examiner's Report, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of November 18th, 2024, five.
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, John. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had, I had one discussion item, or one correction, and it was just under the portion where we are nominating members to serve on committees, said Mr. Gagnon moved that, right, yeah, that Mr. Goldman, Ms. Marimon, Mr. Weiner and Ms. Hersch will serve as the alternates, I think it should be, read, Mr. Gagnon will be as an alternate.
Yes, I caught that as well, so we will make that revision, and so then, do we vote based on that revision being made? Okay. Any other corrections to the minutes? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. All right. Moving on to information and reports, do any board members have any communication or reports to share with the board or the community? Okay, that, it will come, it will come with time. Moving on to future business, announcement of future meeting dates, our next board meeting will be Tuesday, December 16th, 2025, a regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall in the chambers, room 314, followed by our meeting, first meeting of the new year 2026 on January 20th, a regular Board of Education meeting and a presentation of the Construction Improvement, Capital Improvement Plan at 7:00 PM, again, here in the chamber, Town Hall, room 314. Is there a request for any future agenda items? John?
Sure, I would just follow, just following up on the conversation that Jennifer started, I'd be interested to hear from Nutrition Services.
Thank you, John. Any others? So, moving on to comments from visitors, do we have any additional comments from visitors? Seeing none. We have no executive session, so may I please have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you, John. Meeting adjourned at 8:53 PM.